It was to go up her street because it did end.
So we didn't have that.
And then there's a field and then there's Highway 54. And I think they were wanting to go.
Just took a pan.
All the expensive.
Yeah, and nasty because I've been through that.
We'll call this meeting to order. Madam Clerk, if you would take roll call.
Mr. Braun.
Present.
Ms. Case Snook.
Present.
Ms. Reclu.
Present.
Ms. Sebacher.
Here.
Mr. Schuberdecker.
Here.
Mr. Simmons.
Here.
Mr. Stone.
Present.
And Mr. Washington.
Here.
Eight council members present.
And at this time, if you would join me, Pastor Williamson will lead us with invocation and pledge of allegiance.
I would ask this body for a moment of silence and honor for the life and passing of our former mayor, Robert Craighead. Would you join me, please? Thank you. Heavenly Father, we are grateful that we had a wonderful example of honesty and integrity, family and faith to lead us in this community during the tenure of Mayor Craighead. Tonight, Lord, as we remember his life and what he added to our community, we do so, Lord, to pattern our own lives more nearly to the life that he lived before us. I would ask you, Lord, to bless his wife, Grace, and his children and grandchildren, and all the many friends that he had and made in this community and far-reaching. We're grateful tonight that we shared his life together. I also want to pray, Lord, for the schools starting tomorrow, Fulton Public Schools, some of the surrounding districts in our counties have begun as well and some will this week. We pray as well for our two colleges, and we ask you, dear God, to remind all the patrons of our community and communities across America, keeping children safe and healthy and well in times such as these requires the very best in all of us, not just part of us. It's not the police officer's job to keep the children safe. It's not the teacher's job to protect and nurture our own. It's all of us. Every one of us have a vested interest that seeing that children are safe, fed, sheltered, protected, and that they can learn. May we present ourselves tonight in one covenant to do the best we can to see that our children advance and prosper as the new school year starts. I pray tonight for the tragedies in Kenosha, Wisconsin, and praying, dear God, for the citizens who live there, for the community, for the tragedies. And I ask you, Lord, all across America, to help us find the greater good in each of our hearts so that we can love and help and assist and encourage one another in times such as these. I thank you, Lord, for this body here, those that we elect to serve this community. I thank you, Lord, for their willingness and diligence to do great work and commit their lives to this task. That includes our mayor, our council persons, all of our committees and board servants who serve out of the love of the community. I thank you, Lord, for our administrators, department heads, and all the men and women who serve this city on the ground every day. I pray, dear Lord, especially that you take good care of our police officers, firefighters, EMTs, and first responders that will come in a moment's notice anywhere they're called to meet the needs of we, thy people. I lift up this session tonight. I pray, Lord, for the discussions that will be held and any decisions that are made. I pray, dear God, that they are first pleasing to you. I lift up any and all that are part of the city family who continue to need perpetual care each day. I used to have a long list, Lord, but I just put them all in one tonight according to each need your perfect will, and blessing be done. Guide and direct this session and just allow your work to prosper in our community. We pray all this through Christ our Lord. Amen.
Amen.
Face the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Pastor.
Thank you.
Okay. At this time, we'll take comments from visitors. If you wish to speak to the council, step to the podium and give us your name and address and limit your comments to five minutes or less, please. Okay, seeing no one come forward, we'll move on. Next up, we have a public hearing for the purpose of certifying the rate of levy for property taxes for 2020 tax year within the city of Fulton. And Mr. Johnson, if you would run that down real quick for us.
I'm just going to go through some of these notes. The concept when they set the levy is you're not supposed to have a windfall when there's any reassessment, okay? So even though the assessed value of the community changed, that had a direct effect on the levy. For 2020, the auditor determined we could levy .5279 cents per hundred, .5279 cents per hundred of assessed value. This number is an increase from last year's .5022 per hundred. But the overall assessed value of the community dropped from, I'm just going to round these a little bit, from 139 million, it dropped to 137 million. This is a reduction of $2.2 million. And as I said, the goal of the setting the tax levy is not for a windfall when assessments rise and it's not meant to jeopardize you when assessments fall. See, the overall assessed value of the town fell, which means that the levy per hundred can go up a little bit to kind of keep it at the same level. The only way you're supposed to get more money through property tax is through new construction, okay? So, which means based on, if you do all the math and work all the math out, it's going to be an increase in the overall value or the overall funds that the city collects on property taxes of about $25,000 over last year, which, based on that line item, is not a lot. All right? Any questions?
Do we know how many built, how many new construction homes we've had come into the city of Fulton?
Building permits last year, Dennis?
New construction.
Yeah.
I'm going to say probably forty?
Thirty?
Twenty or twenty-five.
Yeah.
Single-family homes.
Yeah.
You can do places and stuff and apartments probably fourteen, forty-five.
And one thing I'd just like to point out to everyone, too, is, one, they pay their tax bill. You know, in your tax bill, based on the housing assessment that you have, part of that, part of what you pay to the county goes to the public school system, ambulance, county, county road and bridge, I believe ambulance, and the city of Fulton. The city of Fulton gets about eight percent, I haven't done this for a couple of years, but the city of Fulton gets about eight percent of the money that you pay in your annual property tax bill.
Okay, very good. So the format for this public hearing will be one hearing on this evening's agenda for the purpose of certifying the rate of tax levy for property taxes for the 2020 tax year within the city of Fulton. The format of the hearing will be as follows. I will issue three calls for anyone wishing to speak in opposition, then three calls for anyone who wishes to speak in favor. We ask that you come to the podium, state your name and address. The council will not interact, but may choose to do so later. The hearing is now declared open. There will be three calls issued for anyone to speak in opposition of the matter being considered. First call, is there anyone present who wishes to speak in opposition of this matter? Seeing no one, second call, is there anyone present who wishes to speak in opposition? And third call, is anyone present who wishes to speak in opposition of this matter? Okay, very good. Now there will be three calls issued for anyone wishing to speak in favor of the matter. First call, is there anyone present who wishes to speak in favor of this matter? Second call, is there anyone present who wishes to speak in favor of this matter? And third call, anyone present who wishes to speak in favor? And at this time, the public hearing is closed and we'll move on to our regular agenda. Thank you. Next up, we have approval of the consent agenda. Council members may choose to remove an item prior to approving the consent agenda. The items we have tonight are approval of the city council meeting minutes of July 28th, the city council meeting minutes of August 11th, and the director administration report of July. And I would entertain a motion.
Motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Go ahead, Ms. Washington.
Before we approve, I want to have a correction. On the 20, I think it's the August 11th meeting, in the minute, we have where it says council, I have, when I looked in the mirror, I have not changed. It says Councilwoman Washington should be counseling.
Yeah, we, I actually sent that correction out earlier this week, yesterday, so that has been changed. I have those updated copies, but thank you.
Thank you.
How disrespectful.
I think it's an honor, really, though. Depends on how you look at it.
Thank you.
Very good. So duly noted. Are there any other questions or discussion on the consent agenda? Hearing done, I'll call for the question. All those in favor say yes.
Yes.
And opposed, no. Okay, we do not have, oh, wait, here we go. Presentation of the July financial report. Sorry, Kathy. About to skip right over here.
I think at the last meeting, I announced where we were on sales tax, but I think it's worth saying again, we are, with six months recorded, we are 3.75% ahead of the same period last year. Which I think is remarkable.
Awesome.
Yeah. And I will draw your attention to the fact that July was a three payroll month, so all the expenses in every funding department are correspondingly higher. July was pretty much business as usual, probably the one thing that was out of the, not out of the ordinary. Twice a year, we make a semi-annual payment on the water bonds, principal $370,000 and interest about $58,000. The other payment in January is interest only. And I've tried to include everything in the notes, but if you have any questions, I would be happy to address them.
Motion to approve the financial report.
Second.
Thank you. I have a motion in a second. Any discussion on this? Hearing done, I'll call for the question. All those in favor say yes.
Yes.
And opposed, no. Thank you, Kathy.
Thank you.
Okay, we do not have unfinished business, new business. It seems like it's not really new business, but we're going to talk about it a little bit tonight again, the face mask ordinance. Now, last Wednesday, we had a meeting here in City Hall with, which four council members attended, I believe?
Yes.
So that, we had a good turnout for that. The director of DHSS was there virtually to give us a little bit of guidance on maybe the timing of a mask ordinance or things of that nature. What sort of came out of the meeting in brief summary would be that we decided that the Springfield ordinance would be a good match for us. They, after further looking at it, they're also a charter city, so that further matches up with what we would want for our city. So that ordinance seemed to make sense, and it's going to be very simple to change a few things and make that match up for Fulton. We also left that meeting thinking that we would have some better information coming from our health department as far as details on where our COVID positives are in the county. And after a further review of that, I believe another 24 hours went by, and the director, well, the health nurse, Sharon Lynch, talked to Dr. Williams, and at this time, she still is not being given any written guidance that tells her she can release more information than what she is. Even though Dr. Williams thinks it's okay, until she gets it in writing, she's not going to do it. So we're kind of at a standstill, unfortunately, on getting some more information on that. Hopefully, you know, we're researching it, we're still looking into it, talking to other municipalities on how they feel like they're able to work within the HIPAA guidelines. So we're not giving up, but at this time, we're at the mercy of the, you know, Department of Health, and they feel like they're being on the safe side for their own protection. So unfortunately, we don't really have much more information to go off of to guide this decision on when a mask ordinance would fit Fulton. So go ahead.
Just one little clarification. The one thing that is routinely said to us by the different state agencies is consult your attorney. Well, the issue is not the city of Fulton, the issue is the council. It'll be the county attorney until the county attorney reviews and gives an opinion on that as well. It's, we're stuck in the water.
So, and there was a question that came up last week of, is it time to send this ordinance to our legal team to see if, you know, what, what we would potentially put in place would be legal? And at that time, we, I really didn't get much of a response, enough of a response, I should say, to spend the extra potentially thousand or $2,000 that it would take to vet, have this vetted by our legal team. But as we get further down the road, I mean, the numbers keep changing. I certainly entertain whatever you guys want to do.
Mr. Mayor, I got some report, well, I got some information pertaining to as of July 31st, I guess in Callaway County, we had 120 positive cases, and then it shortly rose after that. By as of 8/22 or 20, our numbers rose up to 244. So that was, the increases definitely jumped up. And I believe that we ought to enact a, start the wheels and motion to set up for drafting up a mask ordinance, at least drafting up, having it ready, so whenever we decide to, and the council decide, and the city or county decide, when we need to enact it.
Yeah, and Councilman Washington, I feel very comfortable letting, telling you that if you guys decided today to spend that money on the legal part of it, we're ready to send that to our legal team. So that's just, that's kind of where we're at on it.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, I would chime in a little bit here. I've said all along that I would really like to see a plan in place. However, after last Wednesday's meeting, I feel it's very hard even for us to put a plan in place. Now, I'm not saying that we don't send it to the lawyer and legal to get that side taken care of, but I look at what we are, we are up against in many areas that over the last, since March, we've talked about this and tried to get information and tried to get information from the county. We've been unable to do that. The city of Fulton does not run the county health department. The city of Fulton does not have anything to do with that. But I feel like we are, as the city of Fulton, we're 31.8% of the county population in the city of Fulton. For us to make the decision for the entire county and the way our county is split up, there's certainly areas and people that go to other places to shop. If we had, if we had solid numbers to make a determination on, we knew what the age limits of the, where these, where these cases are coming from, there's so much information that's not out there, that we don't have, that we're not privy to. I have an issue with that. I have an issue to make a decision without information, and I don't care whether it's about this or anything. I think, I think you're very well aware that I try to, I want fact-based stuff. I don't have fact-based information. You know, if I, if I, if I was to guess and say we've got 75 cases in Fulton and 20 of them or 25 of them, 30 of them was in the city limits, that's a pretty small number when it looks at everything all as a whole, you know? If people have issues, they need to reach out to their county commissioners. They need to call them. They need to do just like they did with us as the city council in getting that information, their concerns out to them. Call the health department. Feel free to call the health department, you know? I have a tough time not having fact-based information.
Councilman Braun, I can respect what you're just saying, and I, and a lot of that I can agree with, but there are, we are, we're the areas where most people in the areas will come to Fulton and shop. And, and of course, we're, this is where they're going to come, and we're going to get them from the outside if they're in between Kingdom City and us, and they're going to come to Fulton through the local Walmarts, which is closer than probably going, instead of going to Mexico or something, they're going to come here, which Wal-Mart does a lot of the business in Fulton. And I think that, I agree, when do we act this, put this in action? But we need to have, I agree with you, we need to have a plan, and I think we need to get started on the plan and at least have it ready so if we decide there's a need for it and the facts come in, as you were stating, that we need to do something. I agree.
So I'll go ahead and make a motion that we take the ordinance and push it through the lawyers and get it ready to be implemented but not implemented unless we have better data. And we can talk about that after it's ready to go and be voted on, but not to vote on it yet.
I'll second that.
So we have a motion in a second. Madam Clerk, if you would just...
Yeah, give me just one moment. I'm creating that motion right now, so just one second. Just to be clear, your motion is to take the ordinance to legal review but to not enact the ordinance until there's firmer data to review, to go off of. Is that about correct? What do I need to correct? Is that correct?
Well, yeah. We need to get the ordinance ready to be implemented, but we're going to have to vote on the implementation at a later date. Depending on, like what John said, we need more data. You know, Columbia enacted a mask ordinance, but 75% of the people in Boone County live in Columbia, so it kind of makes sense. You know, when, when we don't know how many people are infected in Fulton, is it 10? Is it 60? You know, is it, is enacting an ordinance going to be effective? And that's what we're going to have to decide on, but after the ordinance is prepped and ready to be issued.
The other thing about that is, is we don't have the purse or the pocket for CARES Act money that the county has. The county has five point, or had at one point, they had money for...
But I can verify the county's not spending that money on themselves.
And I'm not saying they are, Rick, but are we sitting, are we sitting on it as, is the county sitting on it instead of doing some things that could help them with, whether it's, no matter what it is?
No, I thought they've spent quite a bit of money already, so.
Do you have an idea about how much?
Yeah, I can tell you almost that they've got, at the last meeting, which was two days ago, we had 3.6 million left.
Out of five?
Out of the 5.2.
So hiring temporary workers to work at the health department?
That was part of it, but most of it's gone towards businesses.
Yeah.
Gone towards the small businesses and stuff in Fulton to help them to cope with what's going on right now with this COVID.
But three-plus million dollars can hire a lot of temporary help.
Well, I mean, yeah, I'd like to take that and split it up both everybody in the county and we'd just all be happy, but that's, that's not the way it works, unfortunately. The county's on the hook for being audited with this money to make certain that it's used properly, so they're a little bit hesitant to make sure that it's getting used the way that it, it needs to be used. So, you know, I'm on that committee, so I've got a firsthand idea what's going on.
I appreciate that, but, you know, I, I just feel like there's a big chunk left out there. They only have till...
They got till December 31st.
The end of the year.
Yeah.
But I do know the...
I guarantee you, none of the money will go back to the federal government.
Gary Younger has said many times, they're not going to give any money back.
Nothing's going to go back to the federal government.
Well, if it's not spent right, it's just going to cost us as the taxpayers because they're not going to go back to the businesses and get it from them. Us, the taxpayers of this county are going to pay.
Right, the county's already been told that, that if this isn't spent properly, the county is on the hook for it, not the businesses, so.
That's what I thought.
I do know the health department has said that they're stressed, they need more people. I don't know if part of that money could be used to help them out, to hire a couple...
They have been using some of it to hire more tracers. And not just that, but they've gotten quite, quite a few people who volunteered to do the work, that are qualified to do it. So it, there's stuff in the works to, as far as tracing the people who have contacted, contracted the disease, the virus, so it's, there's, there's things going on that's in the works for that. But I can also tell you that the county commissioners are just as dissatisfied with the fact that the numbers aren't the way we want to see them either. So, but at this point, what do you do? I mean, the one person that's in charge of all of that has got it in her mind that if she gives any more information than what she's giving out, she's going to be, possibly lose her license. And, and I get that.
And without... It is that she does not hold the license. She is the county health director, but she is not a county health nurse. She does not hold a health profession.
I'm just telling you what was told to me.
No, I just wanted to clarify that point. She has people who works for her.
But she could possibly lose her job if she were to give out any more information.
But it would be so much simpler if the state health department issued a directive that says, here's what you can distribute.
He did it verbally. He did it verbally.
Right, but he wouldn't do it in writing.
He wouldn't write.
That says something.
Mr. Washington, I do appreciate what you said. However, I guess I look at it a little, just a little bit different. We have areas in Millersburg that I feel a lot of those people closer to Columbia will go to Columbia. I have, we have people that are to, to the south that are going to make that trip south. to make that trip south rather than, rather than come to Fulton.
To the north are going to go north, so.
A little bit. So, you know, are we getting all the traffic for the county? I don't know.
That's, that's the, that's the thing.
It's lack of information.
No, that's the thing. We don't know.
Yeah, it's, it's totally lack of information for me to...
So it's very difficult to make a decision without that. But we need, at least we need to get the ordinance generated.
Do we, as a small group, really have the right to tell 13,000 people that they need to wear masks now?
We were voting to represent them.
Yes, to represent them. But do we, do we have the information we need to make that a solid decision?
No, no.
No, we don't have that information.
So why should we even spend the money now to enact an ordinance or to present an ordinance that we may never use?
At least we have one.
It's right. It's a precaution.
We've got an idea now. We've already been told it won't take much more than, than a week or two to get one put together.
Okay. So if it only takes a week or two, what you're saying is we wait?
Yes.
No.
Everybody has their own opinions.
Yeah.
That's true.
The concern I have is if we, if for some reason the state issues a letter or whatever it is to the counties and says, here's what you can release, and our county health department releases the data, and we find out that there's 75 active cases in Callaway County and 65 of them are in Fulton, I would think we want to do something pretty quick.
We might look at considering it, but I'd want to know more information than what's in Fulton.
It's still only...
Where are these people at in Fulton? Are they at the state hospital or at the, inside the penitentiary? There's, there's so many more things than just 65 people in Fulton have contracted the disease.
And I'm going to help you out here a little bit. On the Department of Corrections website, they do say how many are in the prisons, by, by each prison.
And that number's fairly low.
Yeah, and it could be fairly low inside the city limits of Fulton, too.
So they, the Department of Corrections is comfortable in releasing those numbers based on FRDC and Vendalia and Chillicothe, but...
So you had mentioned that we'd have to go through the county's attorney. Has that been started? Has anybody?
The county doesn't have a regular attorney.
So who do we go to?
They hire somebody.
Our attorney.
They would hire somebody. And I think the, the point of clarifying that is it's not the City of Fulton going to the county's attorney. It would be the county getting guidance from their own attorney.
Exactly.
Because the, the health director is going to need that guidance from their attorney. So it's not something that I believe the City of Fulton is really, needs to be in the mix for. It's a county issue, if that makes sense. But it's a county issue that affects the city. So what happens to all cities? Right. So it would be the same thing as Mr. Schibberdecker said. They don't have an attorney. They have a prosecuting attorney. But it would be Sharon getting guidance from whatever attorney the county deems is the correct one.
And we felt it appropriate to spend a little bit of time on her own to, you know, if we could come up with something in writing, some legalese, some, you know, golden egg that we could present to Sharon, it might help her, you know?
Lori Long and myself have spent several hours. She's, Lori's been, is waiting on three or four phone calls. She calls these different state organizations and they'll say, oh, we'll get back to you. And they haven't, she's kind of frustrated, too, that they haven't called her back.
Well, sure.
She's waiting on phone calls. I've, I've contacted the city managers across the state and have several examples of what their county health nurses are releasing. And some of them are releasing very detailed information. And so I asked them, by what, where's the written authority that says what your health department is releasing is allowable? Only one city manager sent me anything. And I hope he's not watching, but it was worthless. It did not fit. There's a, there's a state document out there that allows the county health departments to tell the emergency responders that the address and the name of where all these people are so that if they get called to a fire, they get called to a domestic, that they will have an idea on, maybe we didn't even be careful when we go in here. We need to worry about our PPE.
Sure.
But, but that law is very specific. It's only for the emergency responders.
Right.
I, I think transparency, I, I'm not afraid to make a hard decision if I had information. But lack of information, me to have a 16th or even less than that of what information I feel like I need to make the decision and not having it makes it very hard for me to do that. And transparency, I do not feel is out there with what information we're getting. And it's not just from the county. I don't believe the state is, is helping that situation at all either.
I have a couple of questions specific to the motion. We've received multiple sample ordinances from across the state. Which sample are we sending to the lawyer to have them review?
It would be the City of Springfield.
Springfield.
Because as the mayor said, the State of Missouri has several types of cities. They have charter towns, which we are. They have third class, they have fourth class, they have villages. And there are different statutes that pertain to each of these different classes of city in the state. And what, and we're a charter city. And pretty much what that says is we can do anything unless the state statutes say we can't. Charter form of government is, is the most powerful form of government in the state. It was voted on by the citizens, giving, giving the community those authorities and those responsibilities. City of Springfield is a charter form of government. So I don't, so I know that City of Springfield, I'm sure they had their attorneys vetted. It's been, this ordinance has been well-vetted. They're their attorneys. So I don't know that it would take Tom a whole lot of time. But like if we wanted to go from one that's, you know, Branson, for example, is, is another town that has a mask ordinance. And North Riverside, they have, but they're a different, they're a different class of town. So I don't know that the rules, I don't know if Springfield's going to be right either, but I, I can say that the rules that apply to Branson would be different than the rules that apply to Fulton. The rules that apply to Springfield are the same statutorily written rules that would apply to Fulton.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson.
That's why the mayor and I have talked to him, we'd want to go with Springfield.
The example from the City of Springfield, my understanding is their enforcement is through their health department.
I believe so, yes, sir.
We will not be able to use our county health department?
We would, we would rewrite, we would rewrite and/or eliminate some sections of any of that.
Exactly. So what will be the recommended enforcement that will be sent to the lawyer to review for us?
That's pretty much up to the city council. I'm guessing it's, I'm guessing it's the police department.
That's the only enforcement that we have available to us unless it's, unless it's available to us through the health department, through our contract. There's our contract that allows for health inspections and citations and...
I doubt this, I doubt this will fall out of that scope.
So then the enforcement that we will be, that we will be sending to the lawyer to review will be enforcement to the police department? Okay. And then aside from that, but connected to all the other discussion, Mr. Mayor, I'd like for the City of Fulton to send an official letter to the county health department requesting specifically for the county, for the City of Fulton data. When we had our discussion last week, the county health director stated that if she provided the information to us, she feels like she would have to provide it to all the other municipalities. And that was her concern. She actually stated verbally that she had no concern with providing Fulton with the data that we've asked for. But she feels like she would then have to...
Obligate it.
Provide the same information to other municipalities. I personally am not concerned with that part of her interpretation. I would like for her to answer specifically a request from the City of Fulton of why she cannot provide us with our specific data, not considering all the other municipalities. Connected to that, I would like for us to make an official written request to the Department of Health and Senior Services with the State of Missouri for Fulton data. They have that data. The director of the health department stated that he had no problem with us receiving that data. So if we can't get it from the health department here in the county, I would like for us to officially in writing request it from the state. We need to know how many of our cases we have in the county reside here. I'm fearful that it's less than a dozen out of all the county numbers. And if we're trying to enact an ordinance on less than 1.1% of our population...
One tenth of 1%.
One tenth of 1%. Then that is, that's not how we should be governing.
So that's, that's going to take another motion.
It will. So just to, just to be clear, why don't we go ahead and finish out the motion we already have on the floor? And then would you be willing to make another motion?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Those are disappoints I want to make all at once.
Yes, perfect. That's perfect. Let me just go ahead and repeat the original motion that we have for consideration. It would be to take the Springfield ordinance to legal review in order to have something prepared and ready for implementation once the council receives clear, consistent data. So that is the motion that is on the floor.
With the enforcement modified to be the City of Fulton Police Department?
Well, that really wasn't... That wasn't really part of the motion, but...
No problem. I understand.
Could it be amended?
It could be amended if we would like to amend it.
Or is it just assumed as part of the motion? If it's assumed as part of the motion, then that's fine.
Yeah, because there's, there's going to be some tweaks to the ordinance itself.
Yeah, I believe as long as everyone understands that, that that's where we're, we're moving forward, then we should be...
I'm satisfied with that, Madam Clerk.
Is, is there an alternative to the police department? I don't think so.
I don't believe so.
Not. Have to be another city agency.
Dr. Johnson, didn't you say that the, the county had took over our, the county health has taken over our... They're in the process of doing that, yes. Okay. Will they be, will they assume some of that responsibility? Not for this. I, I really don't think they will for this inspection and enforcement. It's, this is not, this is not our food inspection licenses.
Okay. And, and I don't think we could require the county to inspect or to enforce our law.
If it's part of our contract, we could.
Well, I don't know if it is or not, but...
Because they're enacting, they're enforcing our current health inspection laws.
And I, I want to clarify, it really isn't a contract we have with them to do it. It's, we're not going to do it, so they get it.
In the state statute.
They get it by default because we are eliminating our health inspection program.
They're required by the state.
So it falls back to the county.
Okay.
It's not a, we're not entering in an agreement to have them do it for us.
They're receiving by default. Thank you, Mr. Johnson. I appreciate that clarification.
Sure.
So we're not paying them?
So...
We're not paying them. Is that right?
That's correct.
We are not.
No.
Okay.
So the other thing that I, that I, and then I think it's the last thing that I have that I would like to seriously, seriously think about. Right now, we get, everything that we report on our city website is straight from the county health department. The support that we're getting to do what we need to do, are we in the right spot to continue to post that information? And I'm sorry, some of them, little rah-rah speeches, some of them that even said as much as, if you have COVID-19, please wear a mask. Is that something that we want to keep posting on the city website? Maybe a link or, or let the county take it over. But remove the city out of this picture. We don't have control over the dollars. We don't have control over the information.
The, the post... I'm not, I'm not saying yes or no. I am saying the posts have been modified. Every post will, from here on out, start with the phrase, uh, this, this post was written by the Callaway County Health Department and is being reposted by the City of Fulton.
Because we, I mean, I think we...
To make it, to make it clear that we are not the author of that post.
According to a newspaper article I read, we kind of got thrown under the bus, that we weren't doing something. And I don't feel that's the case. I believe Darren, and, and you've been on top of it, making sure that everything's posted. But Mr. Youngerman states that, well, I'll have to get together with the city and find out why they're not posting it. I have an issue with that. If we don't get information, how can we post information? So that's my last...
I think ultimately, though, Sharon took the fall for that one. At the, but if you read on in the article, Ms. Lynch took the fall for not getting the information to the city.
She did, she did say that there, there was a few days that she missed, is what she said in the article.
Okay, so let's...
One more time, let's read that motion. All right. We are going to take the Springfield ordinance to legal review in order to have something prepared and ready for implementation once the council receives clear, consistent data. It is further understood, we will use the police department as the enforcement mechanism.
Very good. Any other discussion on that? Hearing none, I'll call for the question. All those in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Opposed, no?
No.
Could you please raise your hands for me? Thank you. Six yes and two no.
Very good. That passes. And Councilman Stone, if you would read your request or motion request?
I move that the City of Fulton make official written requests for the City of Fulton data concerning COVID to the department, to the Missouri State Department of Health and Senior Service, as well as to the Callaway County Health Department.
Going to give Madam Clerk just a minute here.
We're good. I got it. I got it.
Okay. Very good. I have a motion and a second on the floor. Is there any discussion on this motion?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
I have no problems in us making a recommend, a request to the county. But if we make a request to the state for the same data, we're essentially going over their heads.
Yep.
And...
Well, you're right.
That, to me, would get them a little upset. And if, wait a minute, wait a minute.
My apologies.
Okay. If we make the request to the county and the county comes back and says no, then I wouldn't have a problem going to the state. But just at the same time, going to the state and the county for the same data, I, I don't think that's right.
Yep, there's a little chain of command issue there.
There sure is.
So if...
But we've asked from both parties.
If the director had not verbally told us that he had no problem with us getting that information, I wouldn't be requesting it this way.
Yeah, but he wouldn't put it in writing. So that's why, but I don't have a problem talking to the county, saying, please give us the data. Now, if they turn around and say no, then I think we could go to the state. But just to go to the state at the same time we go to the county, I don't think that's kosher, fair, however you want to say it. Right.
Okay. I, I would not have a problem amending my motion to state that we requested of the Callaway County first and then it go to the state. But I'd like to put a time limit on, on their response. I would like to receive a response from them within one week of it being postmarked.
That'd be fine. Yeah?
That's fine.
That was a week enough?
Yes.
Okay. I don't know.
It's, three days ought to be enough.
So we have an amendment to the motion on the floor.
And do I have a second to that amendment?
Second.
Rick did.
Now, do we, we need to approve the amended part of the motion?
We need to vote on that amendment. One thing I would note is, one week, it might be difficult for them to give you all that information within one week. Just looking at it from, I guess, a sunshine aspect, they should respond within that period of time.
I'm asking for a response within a week.
Okay. Okay. I got you.
If her response is no, then we can hear that in less than a week and we can move on.
Do we want, do you want to be, do we, should we be specific on what information we want?
We should be very specific, but I didn't know if we wanted to take the time during this council session to go into specifics.
I think we probably should if we're going to ask for it from them.
Okay, well, why don't we, why don't we go ahead and vote on this amendment? And then if we want to put something in there on specifically what you want, I think that would be appropriate. But so we don't get lost in the weeds, let's, let's follow what we have here.
Good call. So I, any more discussion on the amended part of the motion?
So the amended part was we're going to go to the county first and then one week timeframe?
For them to respond.
And if no response, then it's going to the state.
Yep, that's it.
Thank you.
All right. All those in favor of that amendment, say yes?
Yes.
Opposed, no? And back to the original then? I think the most helpful information's going to be this, the...
I think the most helpful information's going to be this, the numbers specific to the city limits of Fulton.
That would be helpful.
Further than that, I mean, I don't know that we need, like, the one that I saw had named, or, not names, but had ages and sexes and that type of thing. I don't know, is that necessary, or that helpful?
That was by, and, wow, the reason I showed you that one, because that was by far the extreme.
Yeah.
The other towns that submitted answers back to my request was by geographic location. And then, like, there was one county that they literally drew lines across the county, and it kind of had four different towns, kind of evenly dispersed. But it was like, you know, the, the Fulton area, and the Millersburg area, and that, kind of that was that way. But the reason I showed you that one that had the sex and age on it was just because that was, that was the extreme.
I don't, I don't think sex is actually necessary, but age groups-
Age group would be a-
Age groups would probably be a good thing.
Would be helpful. It would very helpful.
And I had something else I was thinking about, and it's gone now.
Because you've got your college age, you've got your younger, you've got your senior citizens. Yeah, that would help.
And hospitalized or not hospitalized, might be another good one to have. Asymptomatic. I don't know if we need that or not, but if they're asymptomatic, more than likely, it's not an issue either, so.
Other than, than the potential spread.
And Mr. Mayor, I'm interested in not only the number of positives within the city, but currently active. We had received-
Exactly, yeah.
We received some data a month or so ago that, that referenced the number of positives.
Yeah, I'm getting it.
But it didn't tell us how many of those positives were currently active.
And deaths.
That would help a lot.
And then we would like this on a routine basis. I'd, I'd love to have it daily with the rest of the county numbers.
Not, not just once. We want it, want it from this, from this point on.
All right. Well, does someone want to make a motion with all of those aspects? If you need me to remind you of some of the things you've said, I can do that. But probably a motion would be appropriate.
So moved.
All right. So, and correct me if I'm wrong, we are looking for ages, whether or not they were hospitalized, currently active cases, death numbers, and we want this information on a routine basis. Does that sound correct to everyone?
We can make that age groups.
Age groups.
Yes. Because I don't, I don't think we need to have the exact age of everybody.
Okay.
Just different.
That'd be too specific.
And did, did I have a second on that?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
And as part of the request, obviously, we'll put something to the effect that we, we're not requesting this information just for fun, that it's important for us to make a decision, and that's the reason for it.
Well, and it's not only for us, but it's important for our businesses, so that they can make a decision on what's happening with them, too.
Exactly.
How quickly can we have this letter drafted?
Tomorrow.
We can review it before it's sent.
We can certainly send it out, yeah.
Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah. I thought you meant during the meeting.
We may not want to hold on to it very long, if we don't get-
I would think we could rely on them to do that.
We'll include you in the email. How's that?
Perfect.
Better write that down.
Very good. So we have a motion and a second on the floor.
And that was for the amendment, just to be clear, on all those things we're going to include that we want.
Oh, we're still on the amendment.
We're still on another amendment.
We're still on that.
Okay. So, any-
It's why she's certified.
That's right.
That's why she's certified.
No, that's a good thing.
It is a good thing.
It's why we want to certify clerk.
And your reasons.
All right. All those in favor, say yes?
Yes.
Opposed, no?
All right. Now we are back to that amended motion, which, just a very quick summary, this is not the exact verbatim motion, but we are going to send this request with all those details first to the county health department, then we're going to be waiting one week for a response from them. If we do not receive a response, we will then move this request with all those specific details forward to the Department of Health and Senior Services.
Very good. We have that motion and a second on the floor?
Yes.
Any more discussion on that? Hearing none, I'll call for the question. All those in favor, say yes?
Yes.
And opposed, no? So we will get that done, and hopefully, maybe get a, a little bit further down the road here on that. Okay. Council concerns, I'll start to my lower left, Councilwoman Sebacher.
I have none, thank you.
Councilwoman Reclu?
Yes, I'd like to have kudos for our, whoever, all of our gentlemen and people that work for the city that are maintaining our parks. The dog park looks wonderful. My dogs love going out there and running around. I just want to say, you're doing a wonderful job, and thank you.
Great. Good job.
Yeah.
Thank you for that. Councilwoman Pesenuk?
Yes. I just wanted to say that the rec center is looking really good. We drove out there the other day, and it is really coming along. It looks like a real building. And so it's, I'm, I'm excited for it to be ready.
Yeah, if you haven't made it by, that's sure, change the landscape of things out there. It's pretty, pretty big. All right, moving on. Councilman Sugardecker?
I know this is a rarity, but yes, I do have something.
Okay.
I'd like to say, good job to our Tanglewood Golf Course for having another spectacular month. Hopefully, we can keep these going.
Yep. They, they're doing great things out there, and the course is in wonderful shape, too, if you haven't been out. All right. Councilman Washington?
I'd like to thank Dennis. He shared with me, he has some, some info on about those dilapidated houses and the grants that he's working on. And so, it's good to get in and talk with him, and find out where he's at, and where, where he's going, where he's looking for it. And I appreciate his staff doing that hard work. And so, we're looking forward to working with him a little bit more, and seeing, seeing what I can do on my part to help his situation out.
Very good. Yeah, it seems like things don't move very, very quickly on that sometimes, but there's a lot of effort that goes into that. Yep.
Excuse me.
All right, moving on. Councilman Braun? Pass. And Councilman Stone? Just two things, Mr. Mayor. One, again, a thank you to Tanglewood. They hosted the Mayor's Cup last Friday. Many teams were out there. The, the course was in beautiful shape. The staff were wonderful, just everything about it. And the, the rumor number that I heard was that, that we were already on track to exceed last month's and the months before numbers, in terms of revenue for Tanglewood for the month of August. So that, that just adds to the thank yous and the kudos and the, and everything for the course. There was a mention of the dog park, and that, that reminded me of something. Are we mapping out a pavilion, bathrooms? Is that in the works out there? I had a, I had a neighbor mention that they had seen something, Clay?
We, that, I think that was last year's capital improvement project, and, and the shelter restroom combination came in way, way overbid. I mean, probably sixty, seventy thousand over. So what we did, we took some of that money, we bought the materials for, to build a restroom out there. So that's, that's what we're working on right now. We have those materials stockpiled. In fact, we were out there today, and, and they're starting to do some of the dirt work. And it's going to be on the corner, on the south, south corner of the parking lot, so it can be accessed by the trail and the dog park.
Wonderful. Thank you very much, Clay.
You're welcome.
Thanks, Clay.
That's all, Mr. Mayor? Okay. And Mr. Simmons?
The only concern I have is that the masks, we, we've done a lot of discussions on the mask ordinance, but that doesn't preclude us from everybody wearing a mask anyway. The mask is there to protect other people. You wash your hands to protect yourself. We need to do it. You know, here, we're able to stay six feet apart, but when you get in close proximity to somebody, wear a mask. That's all.
Yep.
It's frustrating, yes.
Yes, it is.
Well said. It, it is. And, you know, we have a lot of people doing the right things. And we just need to see more of that. So, thank you for saying that. All right. Moving on to, well, we have no resolutions tonight, so ordinances, if you would. Councilwoman Reclu, present Bill Number 1587.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Bill Number 1587, and ordinance fixing the tax rate and levying taxes for the calendar year of 2020 on an all taxable property in the City of Fulton, Missouri, and establishing effective date. I make a motion to place Bill Number 1587 for second reading at the next regularly scheduled meeting.
Second. Okay, I have a motion and a second. Any discussion on this?
Just a question. I know this is only, what Bill said was 8% of the homeowner's tax bill.
Approximately.
Approximately, yeah. If, if we raise this rate, is their tax bill going to go up?
Yes. I don't understand the question. The, the-
There was a-
The amount that is proposed, if your house, based on the reassessments of the property, your taxes would stay about level. This, your City of Fulton taxes would be about level.
Yeah, okay.
Because the assessments, generally, a lot of them went down. It went from 137 to 135 million. So the, the assessments overall dropped. So that means, to get the same amount of revenue, the levy actually goes up a little bit.
Okay, but the actual, yeah, I understand.
But if your house was evaluated at a certain amount last year, and it didn't change-
Right.
-it will go up.
It will go up.
Yes.
Or if your assessment went up-
It will go up.
Everything's going to go up. Both of them.
Okay.
All right.
The, the levy amounts are determined by the state auditor. Those are not numbers that we crunch. Those are not numbers that the county crunches. Those numbers are provided to us by the state auditor.
Any more discussion?
Yeah, one more question. If this were to not pass, how much would the city lose?
Twenty-five thousand.
We don't, we have to set a levy.
Well, I know, but if we don't set, raise the levy, if we leave it where it's at?
I didn't do that math.
Well, by raising the levy, by raising the levy, we'd come up 25,000 ahead, so somewhere over, over that number.
But the evaluation dropped.
Yes. Which I can't figure, I, I can't figure that out. If we added 40-plus properties, and, and I know-
Well, it's on the-
-a lot of people whose evaluations went up within the city.
Dropped, uh-
Two point two million.
Two point two million, yeah.
You got, on the, attached to the ordinances, the, the sheets that are provided by the state auditor to the county, then county-
Oh, and I'm not, I'm not questioning that. I just don't know where all the drops went. I mean, I know a lot of people-
Mr. Johnson?
Well, and my, and my question was, when I called, if you look at what happened to the commercial.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
My very quick math states that if we leave the levy at .5022 for every hundred dollars of assessed value, based on the estimated assessed value of the 137 and a half million, that that revenue would be 690,000 versus the 726. So we would be about-
Thirty-six, thirty-six thousand.
Thirty-six thousand dollars less revenue than what's presented on our-
About 30, yeah. Thank you.
Okay. So not a significant amount.
But that's my very quick math.
Oh, and the general fund, 36,000 is a lot of money.
Twenty-five thousand is two.
Okay, any more discussion on this? In my close, Kathy?
Okay.
Yeah.
Hearing none, I'll call for the question. All those in favor, say yes?
Yes.
And opposed, no?
No.
No.
Okay, so Sugardecker and Braun were no's? Thank you. Mayor Cannel, can we take a quick break, real quick?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
We'll be right back.
We'll be right back.
Well, and I agreed at the last meeting that it would be most helpful to ban fireworks in the city of Fulton. Now, if you want to maintain possession, then I could probably live with that. But if we don't ban them, it's going to be very difficult, even though they're in the park or on the street with the manpower that we have now.
Chief, what would you?
Because when you have 100, 120 people shooting everything you can imagine at you, and we've only got seven people out there, there is no way.
Yeah, I understand.
So I'm just trying to envision how maybe I might would think about doing this, in my mind, and I'm not a police officer, nor do I play one on TV, okay? But I would think that if you posted officers in the park prior to, earlier in the afternoon, and if they have to unfortunately stay there all night, why would you not do that? Why?
Because they'd be in the hospital by nine o'clock.
But you're stopping them when they get there. You're not, they're not in the exits. And Chief, I'm not looking at getting anybody in our fire department, or in our police department or fire department hurt. But, you know, just to say, well, we can enforce something, we don't, we can't stop every driver that leaves a tavern or a bar that's been drinking, but we don't ban alcohol.
That's true.
You know what I'm saying? So, there's many different stories to it, and I don't want to see guys, I don't want to see guys get hurt. But if we have to call and ask for help from the county, from the state, from Columbia, from somebody to get us through, why would we not attempt that?
You can't.
Why wouldn't we just try to prevent it in the first place? I feel that, you know, Fulton's banned fireworks before, why can't we go back to that since it's obviously an issue, it's a safety concern for not only our police officers and firefighters, but for the residents that live in that area. They've come to us and expressed their concerns. I think it's very valid, and I, I think that we should look into supporting, maybe changing this slightly, or possible possession of, if you have an intent to, you know, shoot them off elsewhere, you know, you bought them out of town, you signed a release with them that you're not going to shoot them off, you know, where it's not allowed. That's one thing, but not allowing the sale of it in Fulton, not allowing the discharge of them in Fulton at all, I think will greatly reduce any risk of harm to our citizens and to our police officers.
I agree with that, Lindsay.
There's, there's a lot of things that happen in life that you don't like, that your kids do, for example, and...
Well, I think...
Well, let me finish, just relax.
Oh, yeah.
You know, and you always, to stop it, you go overboard. Maybe this is a little overboard, but it's necessary.
Yes.
And if we shut the war down, because I almost think that we still going to have to, to be out there next Fourth of July and arrest people, because they're still going to, they don't care, they're going to still come in and try to shoot them at each other. But if we get this under control, we can always back off on it a little bit. I do agree that possession is something that we might want to take out of this, but shooting it, especially at people and structures, is wrong. And I think we need to hammer them for this Fourth of July and stop it.
I think we need to be careful with the possession part of it. I don't want to remove it completely. I want the officers to have the ability to confiscate them if they approach someone who's actively discharging them, and then remove what they have left over. So possession, it can be modified to something like that, I would think. You know, driving through town, as Councilman Braun mentioned, and you get pulled over for speeding, that's one thing. But if I've got a box full of fireworks and I'm actively shooting them off, and they come and just give me a citation, as soon as they leave, I'm probably going to shoot them off again. So possession in that form, we confiscate? Traffic stops? No. Just to be clear.
Discretion.
Officer discretion.
We can't write officer discretion into ordinance.
That's awful.
We're going to have to get specific.
That's correct.
I don't remember exactly when, but it's been within the last 10 years that we changed the ordinance to allow fireworks.
It was 2010.
Yeah, so it hasn't been, well, I guess 10 years ago, we changed it to allow fireworks. So I don't see where it would be much of an issue to go backwards and, because things have gotten out of hand.
I agree.
To kind of head to your question, or your answer a while ago, I think, and I'll be real blunt here, as I usually am, we have a lot of irresponsible parents in this town that allow their children, 10, 12, 8, to shoot fireworks.
Right.
And they have to give them the money in most cases, and they know what they're going to do with it, but they don't care. So, in fact, it's been probably eight years ago, I tried to get the prosecutor, our city prosecutor, to let us start prosecuting the parents of these children.
Ooh, okay.
And he wouldn't go with that. So I still think it's a good idea, because the parents are the, are the driving force behind it.
Right.
They allow them to buy them, they allow them to shoot them. So I think it's just a lot of irresponsible parents that are allowing their children to put themselves in danger, really, in most cases.
I think we need to shut it down. If we can shut it down and it works, then maybe we could back off on it a little bit later. I think like Councilman Braun said, just having them in your possession and you're not shooting them, eh, we could probably say that's okay.
Well, you probably word it with intent.
Right, right. But we need to shut this down. We can't not have this again next year.
So would we want a motion to amend the...
If we would like to amend it to possession intent, as Chief Myers has said, yes, we would need a motion to amend it.
Okay, I, since I opened the emotion, or, excuse me, since I made the motion, I will modify the motion that says we need to rewrite the statements about possession somehow, that just possession is not a problem.
Okay.
And I'm not what sure what the legalese words need to be.
So what will, what will make that, is we're going to amend the ordinance to remove possession? Is that correct?
If, if that's what the legalese needs to do, then yes.
Okay, so we need a second to approve that amendment.
I'll second that.
Another piece of that, I think, was to add in confiscation. If fireworks are shot off...
With an intent to discharge.
Yeah, with an intent to discharge. Would that need to be a separate motion?
So, Councilman Simmons, does your motion include with an intent to discharge that those fireworks can be confiscated?
I'm going to say yes.
Okay.
And Councilwoman Sabacher, that is, all right, wonderful.
So when, when this says the penalty's a misdemeanor, is that writing them a ticket? That's not arresting them and taking them?
Well, a ticket's actually considered to be an arrest, but, you know.
You don't, yeah, okay.
You don't go to jail, if that's what you're saying.
Okay, yeah. That would help out the parents of the 10-year-old.
They went to jail either.
Or her.
Well, most of them that we would catch are juveniles, and so they wouldn't even get a ticket, they'll just be turned over to juvenile authorities.
All right, so we have a motion on the floor to remove the possession clauses and to add confiscation with the intent to discharge. We have a second on that. Do we have anything else on that?
Okay, any more discussion?
Yes.
Oh.
I'm pulled two ways. I agree with the chief, it's really tough to try to get a handle on when you've got a lot of people in, in a place, and you only got a very few officers, and concerned about the enforcement. Either you enforce it, or, you know, why do we, you know, if we can enforce it, there ain't no need to have in the rule. But anyway, what I was looking at is, I hate to punish, I thought those cannons, whatever they were using, were illegal, and I was trying to making sure that if there's a possibility that we can get a handle on that, making sure that is not discharged. I reminded myself when I was playing basketball, and when the coach, when one person does something, all eight of us, all nine of us are working hard, running the lines, and doing what we're supposed to do, and there's one guy who's kind of lazy and that, and they punish all of us.
Yep.
And I never did like that. And it seems like coaches had a handle, it seemed like coaches, one after coach, another coach did the same thing. And so anyway, I, when I became a coach, I decided, I'm not doing this. I know how bad it was for me, but I'm, I'm along the line of, I hate to ban because of the few people, and I think if we can possibly enforce, or close the park off and have a high presence of law enforcement, have a, making sure the announcement is there and in the paper and things like that, that they were not allowing these type of wars. If we see any signs of, then you can be subject to arrest or something like that. I think if we can head it off, nip it off right at the start, and cut down on the times that you can discharge fireworks, you know, maybe those, you know, maybe only the day before or something like that, and it's really tough.
Yes, it's currently the day before, the day of, and the day after.
Yeah, I think if we can cut that out.
Reinforcements.
Yes, so.
I might add that what you all saw, and I think you all saw the video, that was just a very, very small portion of what actually occurred. Most of the fireworks were down on Poston, Ninth Street, even on Westminster, on down the street, and south of the old railroad tracks. That's where a lot of it took place, in the residential area.
Now, I've got a question on that. If you had presence, police presence, and just saying, we're not allowing these things to happen, and they're more likely, you know, those are the areas that are, in the past have always had challenges, they always did the fireworks. I think if we did something a little bit more aggressive, that we can probably discourage that. So, you know, it's, I hate for anyone to get hurt, and I hate for anyone, as, you know, I have a lot of respect for law enforcement, and I want to support them when I can, all I can, and when I can, so. It just, I just hate the idea of punishing the whole, like you said, 13,000, and just because a few people are, decide to be just obnoxious and stupid and crazy.
And I agree with you, but in this case, this is so egregious that we need to shut it down, and shut it down immediately. And, yeah, we're going to be impacting a lot more people, and hopefully we can take care of it and relax the restrictions, and where other people can do common sense fireworks shooting, rather than that mess. You're right, it hurts, it's going to hurt a lot of people, but we need to shut it down.
See, and I disagree, I don't think it's hurt, we're not, we're not here to punish people, we're here to put laws and ordinances in place to protect them, and our responsibility is to protect them. So it, it's just the language of the narrative. This isn't a punishment, this is our duty, this is our responsibility. I had multiple fireworks hit the roof of my house, and I live on Grand Street. I was nowhere near the fireworks war. It takes one to burn down my house. Our job and our responsibility is to protect them, it's not a punishment.
And that's kind of where I'm seeing the possession issue. The police officers have a lot of discretion. They know whether, but if they go, if they, if there's fireworks going off on Grand Avenue, and they pull over there, and they, somebody said, hey, the cops are coming, everybody stop shooting them, they're going to, if you take out the possession, they're going to have to see you shoot them, in order to be, to confiscate them. Whereas if you have the possession's illegal, and they pull up, and you have, you know, two garbage sacks full of fireworks, they're going to be able to take them. But if you're driving through town, and they're in your backseat, and you're not making any noise, and you're not doing anything other than, got a little bit of lead foot, I don't think they're going to take them.
But you're still breaking the ordinance.
You're breaking the ordinance, so, but...
But they don't write a speeding ticket every time someone's speeding.
But people don't stop at stop signs either.
But we expect them to, that's how we kind of work.
Right.
We don't write a speeding ticket every time somebody's speeding either. I mean, we've got discretion.
Of course.
And we use that.
But you can't write an ordinance assuming discretion, is my point. When we pass an ordinance, when we change the yield signs to stop signs, we wrote that ordinance expecting people to stop, not, well, maybe half of them won't. We wrote the ordinance with the expectation that people would stop at that stop sign. So if we're writing an ordinance...
I will agree with that.
It is going to include possession, and if that makes possession illegal.
Just, just as speeding is illegal, 26th and 25th is breaking the law.
And when we put the speed limit sign up in this town, and we thought, we put it in the ordinance, that this street is going to be a certain speed limit, we write that expecting people will follow the speed limit.
I just wanted to say, I know it's a major problem in the area of Carver Park, but I think your problem's all over town.
Yep.
The houses are close, you have people that have worked and paid for their house through their life, then people, the neighbor can shoot fireworks, and one of those go on your house, and that what they've worked for is being burnt down.
That's right.
I don't think it's just that problem with Carver Park, I think it's a major problem, but I think the problem is all over town.
I absolutely agree.
Yeah, our neighborhood.
We would modify our current ordinance to restrict the area without restricting all.
I mean, when you shoot a firework, you have no control where that firework goes.
So, we have an amendment on the table, is that right?
We do have an amendment on the table, and it is to remove the possession clauses and add confiscation with the intent to discharge.
Okay, how does everybody feel about that? Any more discussion on that?
What's your guys' opinion of that?
I don't know about her.
Okay.
All right, so we want to take a vote on that one.
Yep.
Yep, let's do that.
I'll call for the question. All those in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Opposed, no.
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 Please raise your hands for me. So I have Stone, Shiverdecker, Washington, and Braun, so that is four.
Just negative Nancy today.
Way to go, Rick.
So we have a tie, I guess I get to break the tie, is that right, Madam Clerk?
Yep.
So I'll vote in favor of that, going back to the original motion now.
As amended, yes.
As amended. If we could clarify that.
Yes, that original motion, no, you're fine, that original motion was to move this ordinance to second reading at the next city council meeting.
Very good, any more discussion on that? All those in favor, say yes.
Yes.
And opposed, no?
No.
And hands for me. You, all right, so it would be the same four, I have Stone, Shiverdecker, Braun, and Washington. And Mayor Kanal, you can tie, break the tie.
Yeah, I'll go ahead and vote yes on that, and in the meantime, this isn't a done deal, we've got two more calls to read this bill, and we can have more discussion, bring more information. If you guys want more information, let me know, and we can certainly try to get it for you. We appreciate your time, guys, and...
Thank you.
Okay, moving on, we have Bill number 1589. Councilman Braun, if you would.
1589, an ordinance repealing Chapter 58, Health and Sanitation, Fulton City Code, enacting a new chapter in lieu thereof, and establishing an effective date. I make a motion to place Bill 1589 for second reading at the next regularly scheduled meeting.
Second.
What this does is takes away the requirement that we are going to be doing the health inspections, okay? Take, so if, since we're not doing the required to do anymore, the county will be required to do it. County's on, county's on board.
Very good, and again, that doesn't relieve businesses from being required to get a business license from the city of Fulton. They still have to get a license, and we could deny that, but the inspection portion would go to the county, so. Any discussion on that?
Just on that same vein, to get a business license, they now have to get a county health inspection, right?
Exactly.
So they still apply here, and then my office orchestrates that with our fire and our, with the health department as well.
Okay.
The process is the same, only the person who's doing the inspection's different.
Got you, thank you.
Okay, any more discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for the question. All those in favor, say yes.
Yes.
And opposed, no.
No.
Do we have one no?
We had one no from Councilman Washington.
Gotcha. Very good, moving on, Councilwoman Paesnuck, if you would present Bill number 1590.
Yes, Bill number 1590, an ordinance amending Section 22-29 issuance, Fulton City Code, by enacting an additional requirement and establishing an effective date. I make a motion to place Bill number 1590 for second reading at our next regularly scheduled council meeting.
Second.
All right, and this is just a housekeeping measure. Currently, we've always required someone to get a fire inspection before I can issue a business license, that's a public safety measure. This addition just expressly lays that out within our code, so that it's all in the same area, and when someone goes to look at those regulations, they're all there together. So basically, just a cleanup measure.
Very good, any discussion on that? Hearing none, I'll call for the question. All those in favor, say yes.
Yes.
And opposed, no? We'll move that on for second reading. Tonight's second reading, Councilwoman Sabacher, if you would present Bill number 1585.
Yes, sir. Bill number 1585, an ordinance authorizing the mayor on behalf of the city of Fulton, Missouri, to approve Platte IV for Willow Creek subdivision. I make a motion to place Bill number 1585 for third reading at this council meeting this evening.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. We've heard this read at our last meeting, is there any discussion on this? All those in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Yes, opposed, no? All right, we'll move on to our last...
And we'll actually, yep, last reading.
Last reading here. Councilman Simmons, if you would, Bill number 1586.
Hold on, just one sec, we're going to go to the last reading of Bill 1585 at tonight's meeting.
The third reading this evening.
Oh, tonight, okay, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
I totally missed that.
Bill number 1585, an ordinance authorizing the mayor on behalf of the city of Fulton, Missouri, to approve Platte IV for Willow Creek subdivision. I make a motion to place Bill number 1585 for final passage at this council meeting.
Second.
Third.
Beat me by one second.
And any more discussion on this? Hearing none, I'll call for the question. All those in favor, say yes.
Yes.
And opposed, no? Okay, you've all heard the bill read three times. At this time, Madam Clerk, if you would take the final roll call for passage of Bill number 1585.
All right, Ms. Paesnuck?
Yes.
Ms. Reclu?
Yes.
Ms. Sabacher?
Yes.
Mr. Shiverdecker?
Yes.
Mr. Simmons?
Yes.
Mr. Stone?
Yes.
Mr. Washington?
Absolutely, yes.
And Mr. Braun?
Yes.
Eight council members affirmative.
Very good, that bill passes, we'll move on now to Bill number 1586. Councilman Simmons.
Yes, sir. Bill number 1586, an ordinance authorizing the mayor on behalf of the city of Fulton, Missouri, to sign all necessary documents in relation to an option and land lease agreement with New Singular Wireless PCS LLC of Delaware pertaining to a communications facility located at 804 Bravo Morningside Drive in Fulton, Missouri. I make request we pass the Bill number 1586, 1586, to third reading and final reading at tonight's meeting.
Second.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Mr. Johnson?
I was asked to find out two questions at the last council meeting.
Thank you for...
Mr. Stone, there is no termination as long as the tower company continues to meet the lease and rent requirements. Okay?
Council members, I requested that at the last meeting, because based on the current language, this lease will last 50 years, as long as they continue to pay their lease, and we would have no recourse as a city to change that. That's concerning to me. Maybe not enough to stop this from happening, but it does concern me that we would be basically signing a contract for 50 years without any opportunity to stop it.
And my counter to that is over that same 50 years, they would pay in excess of, I believe, $900,000 in rent.
Understand.
For an acre of ground.
Understand.
The second one was the escalator in rent, and it is correct as written in the document. And the rent on this tower starts out at $14,000. The negotiations, we wanted to schedule to follow the same, to make it easier for finance, for this tower rent to match the tower rent at Carver Park. Well, Carver Park is currently in the $13,000 a year range. This, they rounded it up to $14,000, so it's kind of hard to complain about that, so. They rounded it up. Okay?
Very good. Are there any other concerns or discussion on this? Hearing none, I'll call for the question. All those in favor, say yes.
Yes.
And opposed, no?
No.
Okay, Councilman Simmons, if you would, again, sir.
Yes, sir. Bill number 1586, an ordinance authorizing the mayor on behalf of the city of Fulton, Missouri, to sign all necessary documents in relation to an option and land lease agreement with New Singular Wireless PCS LLC of Delaware pertaining to a communications facility located at 804B Morningside Drive in Fulton, Missouri. I make a motion that we pass Bill number 1586 through third reading and final approval tonight.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Any discussion on this? Hearing none, I'll call for the question. All those in favor, say yes.
Yes.
And opposed, no? Very good, at this time, you've all heard the bill read three times. Madam Clerk, if you would take roll call for final passage.
All right, Ms. Reclu?
Yes.
Ms. Sabacher?
Yes.
Mr. Shiverdecker?
Yes.
Mr. Simmons?
Yes.
Mr. Stone?
Yes.
Mr. Washington?
Yes.
Mr. Braun?
Yes.
And Ms. Paesnuck?
Yes.
Eight council members affirmative.
Very good. Announcements, tonight, we have three to go over. One is the bowhunter permit meeting will be held Wednesday, September 2nd, at 6:00 at the Memorial Park Shelter. Those who are interested in obtaining permit to bowhunt within the city limits must attend this meeting. Additional information may be obtained from Missouri Department of Conservation Agent Stephen Kistner at 573-239-8129. Second up, the city of Fulton will be closed Monday, September 7th. Trash pickup will resume on Tuesday, September 8th. There will be no recycling and yard waste collection during that holiday week, but these services will resume the following week on September, Monday, September 16th. And the next meeting of city council will be held Tuesday, September 8th. A work session will commence at 6:30, with a regular work session to follow at 7:00. Madam Clerk, is there anything else? A work session will commence at 6:30 with a regular work session to follow at 7:00. Madam Clerk, is there anything else? Do we want to say when the MML?
Yes, well, I was gonna ask about the...
Okay.
You know, the MML conference this year is basically not gonna be in person, it's gonna be virtual. We can get something set up here at City Hall if, for anybody that wants to come. It's still pretty much the two and a half days. The cost per participant, if you're interested in getting your CGI credits, is $99 a person. We, I guess we don't need a head count today or tonight, but for anybody that's interested, gonna have to let us know, and we'll get it set up and get you registered and...
The city will pay that $99.
City will pay for that.
When was this again?
October 14th?
I believe it's September 14th through 16th.
14th through 16th, thank you.
I'll confirm that and definitely send a follow-up as well.
So the big days will be the 13th and 14th, I guess, that Monday and Tuesday.
Are we gonna plan to attend it virtually but together, or are we going to have opportunity to attend it virtually individually?
I guess either is a choice.
Either is a choice.
I guess I assumed we'd get together, but that's a good point, Jeff, but you could do it on your own.
Very good. Unless there's anything else, I'll entertain a motion.